Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, August 20th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comments. Are there any public comments from the board?
Active attack integrated response training that was held at the high school. And this was relatively new training. I was told it was implemented about 18 months ago. And it's designed to improve integration between police, fire, and medical personnel with the goal to increase survival of victims in these mass shooting events. It involved personnel not just from Lunenburg but also from neighboring communities, which I think is really of value because if, God forbid, an incident were to happen in Lunenburg or surrounding community, you can bet resources from Lunenburg and the other communities would be pulled in. So the ability for the personnel across the different towns to train together, I think, is really valuable. And although the training was held at the high school, the principles of the training apply to any location. So if an incident was to happen at an office building, at a store, the same principles of this training apply. So I was able to observe two scenarios, and the instructors explained to us the priorities and how the priorities change at different stage of the incident, and the reasons behind the priorities that were in place. So overall, I mean, I think it was very informative for me. You know, the obvious thing is unfortunately we have to have these types of trainings, but it is very valuable. And I want to thank Chief Gamel for the invitation to observe and for all those involved in the training, the instructors, the volunteers, and all the first responders from Lunenburg and the surrounding communities who participated because I think it was, for them, it was a two-day training. I spent half a day there, but I think it was very, very valuable.
All right. Are there any public comments from the public? Mrs. Liscio?
Ron Delicio, 181 Reservoir Road. The members of this board are elected to conduct the town's business. When members of this board sign a contract on behalf of thousands of people, it is assumed and expected the exact terms of the contract will be honored. It should not be necessary for a member of the public to come forward and say it out loud. It is an obvious unwritten rule. One member of this board has repeatedly demonstrated disregard for just about every category of rules governing this body, open meeting law and policies, in addition to blurring and crossing the boundaries of his position. How can anyone turn a blind eye to the negative impact he has had on the board and the negative impact he will have on our ability to attract a qualified candidate to fill the town manager position? He has already violated the public trust in his mishandling of the position. A case like this is exactly why the provision allowing for recall of an elected official exists. It allows the people to remove or remember who fails to conduct business in a manner consistent with the town's best interest. How can anyone think or argue the vice chair's continued service on the board is good for business? Public comments made last at last week's meeting suggested anyone who supports a recall is doing so in haste and in an attempt to divide the town. That is not the way I see it. If the vice chair does not resign, I will support the recall effort. And I can only speak for myself and say, it is not personal. It is strictly business. As of right now, the chair is under, the vice chair is under the oath he swore to serve the town of Lunenburg. He should be thinking about what the oath means. I have thought about it, and I think it means he should resign. It would save time and money while preserving his reputation and, more importantly, restoring the town's reputation and the ability to conduct its business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Liscio. Are there any other public comments? I see two on Zoom, so I will go ahead to Mr. Beardmore.
Hey, good evening. Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street, speaking on my own behalf tonight, although I'm a member of the school committee and a few other committees in town. I know that on your agenda tonight is a further discussion on the ARPA funding. And it's not clear to me that the full extent of the $10,000 request for further assessment on drainage at the track and field was fully explained or understood. And I'd just like to take a minute to expand upon that. Last year, you appropriated $50,000 in ARPA funding for this purpose, and a study was conducted and a report was just published to the school committee that outlines drainage issues and work that needs to be done, starting at the very hill at the top of the track and field complex and going down to the track itself. There are massive drainage issues behind the retaining walls. It's affecting, really, the entire complex. And it is further causing problems down on the track and the turf field itself. However, unfortunately, that $50,000 only brought us down to the track and not the space underneath the track or the turf field. As it's turned out, because of all of the drainage issues, that turf field is at the end of its useful life cycle. And we may be, in the course of the next year or two, dealing with a safety problem that may limit or end its use. It needs to be replaced, but I don't think in good conscience anybody is going to propose a plan to go and borrow money to replace that turf and/or track without a full understanding of the drainage issues beneath that space and what can and should be done to ensure that there's proper drainage under it. These are supposed to last 10 years. We're about seven or eight into the current turf field. And because of the drainage issues that we're experiencing, if you go on a heavy rain day like we experienced, you know, a couple of times in the last several days, the water actually gets under the rug and you, like, hydroplane on top of that field. And it's certainly not playable, but also all of that rubber content that exists to soften it moves with the water. And it's just, it's beat up and it needs to be replaced, but we shouldn't replace it without a full clear understanding of really what needs to be done to ensure that the entire complex is properly draining, that we can maintain it well into the future. This $10,000 will complete that assessment and give us a plan such that we can bring forth a real plan to ensure that we can use that facility over the long term. Unfortunately, I think we all thought that the $50,000 would do the whole project, but it didn't. And an additional $10,000, I think, is going to get us to a point where we can bring forth a recommendation that will allow for the continued use of that facility, both in the near and long term. And I would appreciate your reconsidering the priority of that particular project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Harry, I see you have your hand raised as well. Oh, you're just going to have to unmute yourself?
How about now?
That's good. We can't really hear you, though. The volume's a little low.
Okay. So my name is Harry Kubetz. I have resided at 125 Howard Street, Lunenburg, since 2009. Firstly, I would like to thank all members of the Select Board for your dedication and service to our town. I very much appreciate your insight and thoughtfulness, and at times it seems like a thankless job, especially for one that is volunteer. I am Chair of the Lunenburg Library Board of Trustees, and I know the effort that goes into just that. I know that effort pales compared to what all of you do on the Select Board, and I sincerely appreciate it. That said, having watched recent Select Board meetings, I have to say that I am taken aback by the strife that is so evident, not only between Select Board members, but also barbs thrown from fellow Lunenburg residents, in particular directed and personal derogatory comments towards Michael Ray Jeffries. I am not taking any position for or against what others may think about Michael Ray, but I feel compelled to express my personal experience with this gentleman. Michael Ray has been the Select Board liaison with the library, and I know that I am accurately relaying the opinions and thoughts of all of the trustees of our library and our library director, saying that Michael Ray has always been extraordinarily professional and understanding of all that we have shared with him. He has been amazingly responsive, very timely, and overall an excellent advocate and asset to the library, a huge asset. Our opinion of Michael Ray could not be higher, and I thought a bit of contrast with other opinions that I have heard is merited. Once again, thanks to every member of the Select Board for listening to what I had to say and for your dedication to our town.
Thank you, Harry. Are there any other public comments? Mrs. Lincoln?
Debbie Lincoln, 46 Hemlock Drive. I apologize. Usually I speak from my heart, so I don't need notes. I am heartbroken, so I am going to read this statement. I'm here as a private citizen, not representing the four town groups I'm involved with. I'm not going to say I love Lunenburg, but simply that it is my hometown, that I am an LHS graduate, and that I chose to raise my family here. But right now, it seems as though it is not my hometown. I feel as though I am in the 1690s in Salem or the 1950s, where we are hunting down witches or communists. Have we become so tone deaf to civility and community? Watching our national leaders debate not policy, but mock each other's golf games or tear each other's characters apart, and now, as it trickled down to our dear home? Each week during public comment, we listen to citizens lambasted, accused, and fingerpoint our public officials. Each week, we listen to the growing list of vacancies on committees and boards and town employment positions. And lately, each week, we listen to a dysfunctional board who can't get anything accomplished because it is so mired down, bickering amongst itself. It would take a blind, deaf, and dumb, no, stupid person not to see the obvious divide. How does any of this help Lunenburg? And yet, every week, volunteers, employees, and a new town manager are sought. Given the current state of affairs, who in his or her right mind would step up into this viper's nest? There is so much that needs to be done to move forward in this town, to heal, to thrive, to become a community again. Please, be the example we need, and don't play into the negativity around us. Now, I promised you, and I promised myself, that I would never come before you without something positive to say. So, Carter, I would like to thank you for your fresh ideas and new perspectives. In your short tenure, you have paid more attention to the Council on Aging than your predecessor did in seven and a half years. Caesar, I know that you have a steep learning curve, and you're not getting a lot of support, but I think you're doing a great job. And Michael, you deserve a lot better. Hang in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lincoln. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Lincoln?
Pete Lincoln, 46 Hemlock Drive. I'd like to address this statement to the people watching in. They may not know me. My name is Pete Lincoln. I'm 82 years old, and I shouldn't be here tonight. I'm nearly blind in my left eye. I have two knees that need to be replaced, and I'm suffering some condition that gives me constant headaches. This is going to be difficult for me to speak to you. I should be home with my little dog, watching the ballgame and preparing for talking baseball. But I abhor what has been going on in this room for the last couple of months. I abhor it. "I love Lunenburg," says everyone. Talk's cheap. The cost of action is colossal. Let me tell you what I've done in my life. I spent 38 years, 38 years teaching seniors how to adapt to the toughest part of their life. In the next 20 years, I volunteered for the Council on Aging to help seniors deal with the concluding parts of their life. Debbie and I have spent our lives for Lunenburg with our friendships, our work, and our wallets. That's loving Lunenburg. We've admired Michael Ray Jeffries since he was a freshman in high school. He himself was remarkable in his intellectual abilities, his way to analyze town affairs. My wife and I continue to consider him a close, personal friend and confidant. So I said again, we abhor what has allowed to crucify his character. There's no groundswell to remove him. Most of the people I've talked to don't even know what's going on or care. Remember, 400 people voted in our elections. There's no groundswell. This is not the kind of town situation we had with Richard Carlson, who stole thousands and thousands of dollars from our children. As far as I can comprehend, he's being accused of creating a toxic atmosphere. Creating a toxic atmosphere. My little dog, Pesky, creates a toxic atmosphere two or three times a day at home, but we're not going to get rid of her. This attack is the work of a single man aided by a few flunkeys and parasites who jump at the fun. This man has a history of hatred of Michael since his induction, his election. Early on, he called him a kumbaya boy. Kumbaya boy. That made me sick. He also was attacked, the recent member of the Select Board, Lou Franco, one of my favorite guys in town, the sharpest, cleverest person you could meet, by taunting him in public places. "One and done, baby. One and done. One and done." This is loving Lunenburg? See a particular pattern here? Be careful, Caesar. This is nothing but a lynching party. And I implore the good people of Lunenburg to not be complicit in it. Do not sign this recall petition or participate in any of this vindictive action. This is not loving Lunenburg. We were given a jaded Turkish proverb about, I think, clowns in castles. I offer a truth spoken by one of our greatest Americans, who gave his life to bring all of us together as one people. "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Abraham Lincoln from the Book of Matthew. Peter Beardmore, we just heard from, lifetime Lunenburg resident and crackerjack Lunenburg High School student, recently noted on our Facebook post, serious topics for Lunenburg, staffing issues, employees' pay, financing software debacle, new buildings, trash compacting, finding a new town manager. But instead, we'll spend more time distracted by this hunch and hunt. Each of you selectmen was elected with confidence that you might find paths for solutions for our problems. Put your collective energy to do just that. Focus on the positives to make Lunenburg the best place it can be, and put your egos in your pockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Are there any other public comments? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to announcements. I have a few. The Lunenburg Agricultural Commission will be hosting an agricultural fair on October 5th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at TC Passios. There will be tractors, hayrides, games, and vendors. For more information, visit the AgCom's Facebook page at Lunenburg Agricultural Commission. The second town official meet and greet will be Thursday, September 26th at 5:30 p.m. at Low Places Ranch. It'll be a great opportunity to network with town officials, local businesses, and enjoy some good food, drinks, and a DJ. Overnight roadwork and line painting will be taking place tonight to include crosswalks, stop bars, and school stencils around the center of town. For a full list of streets that will be painted, visit the town's Facebook page or website. And finally, the state primary election will be on September 3rd. In-person early voting will begin this Saturday and will be held every day until next Thursday. For hours for in-person early voting and more information, visit the town's website. Are there any more Communications from other boards. I have one from the school committee. Dear interim town manager, members of the Lunenburg Select Board and members of the Finance Committee, thank you for your continued support of Lunenburg Public Schools. This letter is to request the allocation of the recent increase in Chapter 70 funding to the school budget for the upcoming school year. As you may know, the fiscal year 25 Conference Committee budget was released recently, and Lunenburg has received an additional $31,882 in Chapter 70 funding over the governor's initial proposal. It is clear that the legislature intended for these additional funds to support our schools. Therefore, we request that the funds be designated for appropriation to the school department at special town meeting in November. In light of the ongoing hiring challenges faced by Superintendent Burnham, these additional funds, though not extensive, could significantly help in addressing pressing needs within our school system. Ensuring that our schools have the necessary resources is crucial for maintaining the high standard of education that our children deserve. Kindly consider including this additional $31,882 in the school budget for the upcoming academic year. Your attention to this matter would greatly benefit our students, staff, and the overall quality of education in our community. Thank you for your attention to this important issue and for your continued dedication to the welfare of our town. Respectfully, the Lunenburg School Committee. Any other communications from other boards? All right. Sure.
Does the board have correction for me to include that in the fall town meeting warrant?
Yes.
I was waiting for a comment, and that was what I was going to recommend, that we forward that to the interim town manager for inclusion, since obviously that's the direction.
Yep. All right. Moving on to appointments. First, we have the request for a special event license and one-day wine and beer license for St. Boniface Parish's Oktoberfest on September 21st, 2024. This is a familiar request, but I'll go ahead and have you guys speak to the event, and I'll open it up to questions.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Botkin, 64 Beale Street.
I'm Tim Murphy, 97 Island Road.
And we're here tonight. I counted, I couldn't remember myself, but I guess it's the seventh time, Seventh Annual Oktoberfest. And so we're here for the license, one-day liquor license, and also the special event license. And we're happy to take any questions.
Sure. Are there any questions from the board?
Well, the first thing is, obviously, Mr. Botkin is not prepared. He does not have his St. Boniface shirt on.
I know. I know.
This is almost an improper request.
I was trying it before we started.
After seven years, it doesn't feel like it used to. But it was a little too chilly tonight. We brought the autumnal weather with us, but...
This is preparation for the Oktoberfest.
If you come down on the 21st, you'll see me and my full, September 21st, full regalia.
10 to 6.
10 to 6. And one of the differences this year, I wanted to note is, last year, if everybody remembers, we had that hurricane that was threatening. And, of course, you know, leading up to that, we're like, well, we might have to ask to move the date to the following Sunday. But everything worked out. We went ahead on the Saturday. So part of this application, we wanted to just have the alternative rain date of the followings, the next Sunday, the next day.
The following day.
The following day. Thank you.
It's okay. It's why I'm here.
Exactly.
This is something, Mr. Chair, that, as the applicant has said, has come up for the last seven years. It's been a very successful town event, fully supported. Everything seems to be in order in the application, and I don't see any reason not to approve it.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll offer a comment.
Sure.
Thank you for putting this one every year in the clam chowder I had a couple years ago. It was excellent.
Right. Hoping to have it again this year.
Yeah, we got it from Conrad, so now we've got to go back to their source. So we've got to, we're working on that. But you're all welcome to come, please. 10 to 6.
And I also want to just make a mention that Ms. Aubrey, who's new in the position, she was really fantastic to deal with. And she was, you know, she had big shoes to fill, but she did them very, it was a very smooth process. So that was nice.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would entertain a motion that we, well, not entertain, I would make a motion, that we approve the special event license and one-day wine and beer license for St. Boniface Parish's Oktoberfest on September 21st, 2024, with a rain date of September 22nd, 2024.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you very much. Hope to see you on the 24th.
We're going to the Oktoberfest meeting at church.
All right. Moving on to interim town manager report.
The Select Board's resolution requesting the emergency declaration with respect to Neshoba Valley Medical Center was submitted to a wide variety of state offices and, upon the suggestion of one of our representatives, was forwarded to additional state officials. I don't know if you see it, but the Commissioner of the Department of Public Health did declare yesterday that this hospital provides essential public medical services. To what extent that will impact things, it's hard to say. Certainly, the delegation continues to push the state... The state has taken extraordinary action with one, taking it by eminent domain to sell it. And there's remaining hopes that something yet can be found here. I want to follow up on the Agricultural Commission. We did give them authority to use the space between the Adult Activities Center and the TC Passios Building for their ag, provided they participate in pre-event planning with our public safety officials, police, fire, making sure the tents are appropriate, electricals appropriate and the like. They have been talking about a vendor applying to the Select Board for a one-day liquor license. That remains to be seen. If they do, you'd actually have two actions. One, to grant the license, and the second, to allow them to serve on public property as the property owner in conformance with your open container bylaw. I'd like to recognize Judith Ernst for her service on the Cultural Council. I know she wasn't there. My understanding is for a lengthy time, but we appreciate the service of each and every volunteer. I'm not going to belabor the list of vacancies that we have, except to say that we did pick up one vacancy on the Stormwater Task Force. And on the Sewer Commission, I'll be meeting with them tomorrow night. It's rumored they have some possible candidates. And if they do... If they don't, I will be penning the letter in conjunction with the remaining members to everyone in the sewer district, pointing out that their service relies upon people being on this commission and encouraging one or more to get involved. So we'll wait another week or so on that, but I've talked with Bill. I talked with one of the commissioners today. That seemed to be received favorably.
Mr. Chair? I just want to clarify. When you say we picked up a vacancy, I'm not sure. Did we get one more vacancy? Or we filled the position?
I'm sorry. We have received a resignation, which triggers one additional vacancy.
Oh, so we actually added, okay. And when you said we picked up a vacancy, the vacancies increased.
Yes. I'm sorry about that.
I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't understand.
We have begun the process. I met with Kara McCarty, if I'm saying it correctly. And she has started to develop a form, which can be filled in online and signed electronically, so people can then just send it to us electronically, you know, attach a resume. We want to try to bring this a little bit more forward. In the meantime, interested persons can find the volunteer application on the town's website. And I'm going to make an offer that if anyone has any question about any of the commissions, you come on in and meet with me, and if I can't answer your question, I'll get you connected with the chairman of that commission or the staff member, whatever it is. Because I understand everyone is short of time. And if you're concerned at all about how much time something might take, by all means, we want to try to assure you of that, that you could take on this additional responsibility. The network administrator, we're still trying to get those interviews set up. The chief tells me he has a number of applications for public safety desk clerk that look good to him. He'll be scheduling interviews, I'm told, over the next few days. We're looking for additional seasonal cemetery labor. I'm afraid that the one we did appoint worked a little bit and then went MIA on us. Administrative Assistant Assistant, we made an offer that was rejected. We'll keep working on that. I am pleased to tell you that I have what I think... Light a candle. Final interview for Land Use Director tomorrow. We do have a small practical exercise we've set up for them. We'll hand them some plans and ask them to do a quick site plan review. And we've invited a representative from the Planning Board, the Concom, and the ZBA to observe those interviews, and I'll collect their thoughts afterwards as to what their reaction was. And that is my practice going forward on department heads, to involve user agencies. I do always have to point out, as I've told you a couple of times, it's not necessarily democracy. It's my name that has to go on the memo at the end. But I think getting their insights is important, and so that will be my practice for the time I'm with you. Our Assessor's Data Collector did start this morning. Had her onboarding. We're very pleased. She seems to be settling in quickly. And with respect to the Sewer Business Manager, I will be meeting with the Sewer Commission tomorrow night. We've put forth a name for their consideration and ratification, and I've agreed to go down and meet with them at their 6:00 p.m. meeting. And we've made an offer on the Conservation Administrative Assistant, which has been accepted at this point in time and is going through its final background checks. We'll have that for you. So yes, we have more vacancies than we care for, but we're making progress, and I think that's important. On the procurement front, we're getting bids on the roof at the Adult Activities Center. They're due next week. We've given you the timeline for the Historic Property Survey. Town Manager Recruitment Services, we sent that to the Chair of the Screen Committee. As of this afternoon, we hadn't received any comments, but we did let them know that if there were some, we could get it adjusted tomorrow. Otherwise, we'll get that out.
We did meet last night, and we did approve it as a committee, so Mr. Murphy, who's the Chair of that committee, should be getting that to you, because we did agree on, they were very minor changes.
Okay, good. So we'll hold that to get Mr. Murphy's comments in the morning then. And I am, you know, we've given the link for state training. It's a video webinar kind of module. But Julie will be taking the OSD, the Office of Operational Services Division, for the state bid, how to use that. And as soon as she's completed that and just a little more comfortable with it, we'll get the bids for the Library Shades. I did attend the Budget Task Force, although I understand I sent the thunderstorms that disrupted my internet south. I think Member Emke said that as soon as she got my text that I'd lost my internet, the flash of light was in her window. We did do the final interviews, Mr. Bernard, Julie, and myself, and we'll have that in front of you on September 3rd. We're going to, we spent some time, although I feel like the guy who's dog ate his homework, something happened to one of my memos, but when we get to ARPA, I think that the spreadsheets will work well on it. The good news is, or the bad news, depending upon how you look at it, is you have a little more money to spend than we initially thought. I did meet with Suzor. They have a weekly IT meeting. I sat in on that. I pushed him on two fronts. One, they said that our server was built to Munis' specifications. I've asked him to send those specs right back and certify that indeed, because the server was prepared before you did your software update, to make sure that the software, or that the server fits everything required by that software update. I want to make sure they didn't send us something and there's something not quite right. We have started to look. You have 110 users licensed using your Munis software. And we have a considerable number of people who have licenses on our Office 365. As he and I agree, that it's time to go through those lists and make sure. I'm not convinced that every time somebody leaves us, we decommission them, and so we need to see where that is all about. And we did talk at length about the drive mapping, because it's literally driving me crazy trying to find where everything is. I'll be in the office with you next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and available by phone or email, as I've tried to be the last few days. And that's what we've been up to this past few days.
Any questions for the interim town manager?
I have one. Thank you for looking into that SharePoint potential conversion. I did get a note from a resident that's also on several committees that the Parks Commission, at least, I believe, and the Capital Planning Committee are using SharePoint, not Google Drive. So as you're continuing to do that, it'll be interesting to know what committees are already using that.
Yeah, I think we need to take a global view at this, because Suzor's initial reaction was, well, wait a minute. We think the selectmen have the licenses needed for SharePoint. Well, if you do, why are we over here? And what I said to them was, I'm sure it was an economic decision at some point in time, but when we've got some people over here on SharePoint, and we've got some people here on Google Drive, and we have some people who are on both, depending upon, you know, what... It's just challenging, is a word you'll probably hear me use a lot, and I apologize if I overwork it. But frankly, it's difficult to know where things are and to share things. So we've asked them to take a little bit more of a global look at it than just the selectmen would like to be on SharePoint. So that's going to take a little bit of time.
I appreciate your efforts to streamline that.
But I do think that there's something there we need to take a look at.
I want to echo as well Amanda's comments. Thank you for that. I have a question. We're about to discuss ARPA here in a second. And I know that the rollout for ARPA was a bit delayed. Many organizations were commenting back, you know, four or five months after the board committed funds going into this year, saying that they hadn't received the funds yet. And so the question that I have is twofold. The first is, have the funds actually been made available to all the organizations that haven't spent them? And then the second part is, and have those organizations been made aware that they need to have everything under contract soon? So that way, we don't reallocate or recommit those funds.
To the best of my understanding, you have three independent agencies that required contracts. And I have copies of those and can share them with the board if you've not seen them previously. I can also tell you that after the Finance Director and I went through these the other day, we agreed that we need to be more proactive in terms of staying on it. Now, I did start to meet with some of the users this morning and tell them that, or ask them where they weren't getting the money spent, and pointing out that at some point, and I didn't know when that might be, if they didn't get their money spent, and I'm using that phrase. I'm not trying to drag this out by saying committed, that there might come a point in time where the board had to say enough's enough, and that that window starts to get smaller. I want to thank the agency I met with for having their purchase order for approximately $16,000 in equipment in my email shortly thereafter. So we'll meet with each one of them. And between the Finance Director and myself, this is a real priority. It does take time, and so that's why when you get to the first spreadsheet, the ARPA reprogramming, it'll show you a little bit more money that you have to spend. And when we get to the prioritized, there's one item that can actually be bought out for a little bit less than was requested. We'll do our best, Counselor, and I think that the Finance Director and I will be meeting on no less than a biweekly basis to make sure we're trying to push this forward. We may not be popular in some corners when we remind people about this.
Yeah. No, I understood. I heard some frustration from some of the nonprofits that were really hurting for the money and couldn't touch it for, again, four or five months after it was committed, because, you know, the town administration implemented some new process that they didn't know about for the first three or four months, and so it was very delayed. So that's why, where I'm coming from is my concern is that, you know, if the money didn't touch people's hands until February or March, and then we're sitting here pulling it back, which, you know, we're going to have to, that we at least give them some runway to say, hey, this is coming. You know, we need you to expend this and really get that push out. That wasn't out to get the money in their hands, but it would be good if we can get the push to get them to spend it.
I will reach out to the three entities that I was given contracts for. I'll accomplish that this week. If there is a particular entity that someone is concerned about, just shoot me an email, and I'll get to them as soon as I can.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Carter? All right. So let's move on to old business. And starting first, we have review ARPA funding requests and committed funds. So I reworked the compiled prioritization list. You'll find it under Final Compiled ARPA Requests, Prioritization 2024. So the tab that you want to go to is Average.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Before we get into the requests, can the interim town manager review where we stand with the current funds, the spreadsheet that was put in the drive?
Sure. It's called ARPA Reprogramming 2024-08-15. And the $60,000, and this is where the dog ate my homework comes in, I apologize. There was a memo that explained this better. The $60,000 consultant for ARPA reporting. I've asked you to rename ARPA Administration and IT Staffing Challenges. The Boys Club and Girls Club for their FY '24 after-school programs is fully expended. I will reach out on the $25,000 this week in follow-up to Member Jeffrey's request. The Turkey Hill Lions Club food pantry equipment is fully expended. The public access is about halfway through, and there was approximately $16,000 in a purchase order approval submitted to me today. So that's going to bring them into the $40,000 range. And that was a very positive conversation, and I think the director understands the need, my drive to not just get the money committed, but to actually get it expended. We do have the Municipal Building Design Committee. I don't know, frankly, much about that. I will say that's a fairly large undertaking if we have to go through designer selection. We really need to get that underway sooner rather than later if we can. The Police Department has about $5,000. We've targeted that as being available to be reprogrammed. The Select Board, these are the ambulance, the 506. The challenge there will be that the chief will need to make sure that every dollar is committed or expended. The ambulance isn't going to be in until next spring, and if he's under the 506, it's going to be too late if he doesn't have everything under contract or fully expended. He's promised me that he won't leave any money on the table. The Board of Health, let's see, that, the staff salaries was fully expended. The Public Health Mission was fully expended. There's about $1,700 left on the telework capacity. I'm not sure exactly what that was all about. You've got about $20,000 and change, $26,000 on the FY '23 tax assessment. You have, for Fiscal '24 and '25, bills sitting downstairs that approximate that much, plus a commitment to pay for the FY '25 Interim Services Division in about $5,000, which I'm told was to be paid out of ARPA, but was never slotted in here. If we rename that, the remainder for FY '24, '25 valuation... If we rename that, the remainder for FY '24, '25 valuation services, we'll still have a little bit of a deficit there. But I've worked with the assessor and I think between their operating budget and the reprogrammed money up above, we can cover all of that. The only good news in it is we have bills in hand and can spend the money. Not great news, but.
So, I'm sorry. Can we take just one step back, the FY '23 tax assessment issue? You said there's roughly $26,000.
Yes.
And where's that, that's already earmarked for something?
It's not. It's, should be, could be available for reprogramming, except you've got over $21,000 in bills for fiscal '24 related to assessing that haven't been paid. And you've got approximately $5,000 for your interim valuation services with Vision. Now let me bust those two apart. I'm told that the $5,000 was to be paid out of ARPA. That had been the plan, but it was never slotted in anywhere. The bills that are overdue, I don't know how that happened, but we got a couple of choices. We, at the Fall Town Meeting, appropriate money and pay them as a late bill. I'm really trying not to appropriate any new money at the Fall Town Meeting because I just, I'm not as comfortable with the budget as I'd like to be. So, but it's an option. The other option is to pay it out of these monies and get it paid faster and cleaner.
Yeah.
And all that would require would be for us to revote and extend.
Rename, that's it.
Yeah.
If you adopt this spreadsheet that's in front of you, and I'll work my way down through it.
Okay.
Those bills will be on the next warrant before you.
Well, we can't accept this because for those lines, you don't have any values.
It's the remainder. I mean, basically, we're, we can do that math here quickly. The Board of Health on the COVID response is fully expended. We are awaiting a report on the athletic field study. Mr. Beardmore, is it?
Beardmore.
Beardmore spoke, I don't know if they were looking, when we get to the other spreadsheet for some extra, but we're looking for that to be fully expended. The Chromebooks, I'm told by the Finance Director, is available to be reprogrammed, that once the override went through, this was then made available for reprogramming.
So my understanding is that the athletic field study is complete? That was my understanding.
That's our understanding also. We just haven't seen the invoices for it yet. The Water District on their master plan is fully expended. On their public education is expended. The DPW snow trucks, they're sitting at Madigan's. When Madigan gets to them, it's five weeks each to build them out. I'm being a pest to Bill. Bill's being a pest to them. We certainly would love to have them in time for snow season. These are similar to the ambulance. We have to make sure at the very end. And if we have to go a little bit over to make sure it gets done, we'll have to do that. The Water District, we actually got another one of their invoices today. So they appear to be on track to get their pilots done. And the Sewer Department, when I meet with them tomorrow night, I'll ask them and Bill where they are on the manhole repairs. We need to get that out to bid. The exterior envelope, I will be meeting with, please accept my apologies as I go through names, especially with my last name. Is it Muir?
Muir.
Muir.
This is his first name. Muir is his first name.
Yep.
I'm meeting with him Thursday, touring the library facility, talking about his operational issues. And of course, you know, where are we on getting this money spent? Because they have about $190,000 there that we've got to get moving. So when you do all that, the Parks Commission, they did open the designer proposals last week. Cultural Council, we've got to talk with them. And then of course, the supplement support for the '24 revaluation. I don't know how the number was put together, but it doesn't look like it covered everything that passed due bill that I spoke with you about. So I know that you had anticipated $313,140.80, but when we put the interest in for July, it actually tallies out at $339,702 and some change. Now, that interest will continue to build every single month. The good news is that once you get past December 31, it doesn't fall under the expenditure rules. You can keep rolling along with that. So it provides a little bit of a contingency if something goes wrong someplace. But as I said, I really want to thank Public Access because we had that conversation and the purchase order came in. And that's, I'm hoping we can have as successful conversations with the other participants.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Regarding, I want to make sure because it's been up in the air and I know that the prior town manager had questions about the $1 million for the park because of the way it's been used. I want to make sure that that is indeed protected and that under some rules, somebody is going to say, we didn't do something right because it's a million dollars.
I'll get a little bit deeper into it.
All right, so the changes that we can make tonight on this, let's just summarize it. So we're renaming essentially the consultant for ARPA reporting to ARPA administration and IT staffing challenges, right?
Yes.
We can do that tonight. And then down to the fiscal year '24, '25 valuation services. And that's coming from the initial support for FY '23 tax assessment issue.
Yes, and we can either just.
Do that one tonight.
We can just tack the name on and move forward or we can do the math and plug it in if this is something you're supportive of.
Okay. And then finally is the schools, right? The Chromebooks, network security upgrade and 911 compliant phone system.
Yeah, the 300 and change available, 331 includes the 5122 from the Police Department, the 1707 from the telephone, and the 101640 from the Chromebooks.
Okay, so it does include all of that?
It does.
Okay, because it was my understanding that we were accounting for the 101,000 from the schools too, so, okay.
And then July's interest.
Right, okay. So, all right, so basically we're just changing the name for those two. And as you said, the 5,000, approximately 5,000, approximately 1,700, they're in the 339,000 that we're considering unallocated. So we'd have to account for that.
Yes.
Okay.
The 339 tallies that out.
All right, thank you. All right, so are there any questions first?
If, yeah, well, if we, under available balance for the initial support for FY '23 tax assessment issue, for some reason that number is, it got eliminated, it's blank. So we need to put that in. That's the 23,000 that the interim town manager said we have, or 26,000 approximately. But it's not there. So we'd want, we'd want to make sure that cell is filled.
Same thing with the other renaming one, just carrying across that 60,000 to the available balance?
Yep.
Does that change the numbers at all or?
It doesn't. It just.
Okay, yeah.
Clarifies. As opposed to renaming, what I'm hearing is let's actually move the dollars within the accounts.
Okay.
Yeah, just so we can track.
Yeah.
Easier.
I think in addition to those just general changes, it would be helpful if we had another column that instead of, because I think right now everything that is committed and under contract is falling under available balance. And it seems that there might need to be another column that says committed and under contract. And that way we can separate out what that remainder is. And then it would be helpful, you know, I see, for example, like we have some trucks ordered, you know, but were the trucks 480,000, were they 475? So if they're already ordered, we should have that dollar amount. And so it would be helpful to kind of know for those things under contract, the value that is under.
More of an accrual approach to it than just a cash approach. Yeah, we can do that.
And you said you're meeting with the library tomorrow?
No, Thursday morning if I remember correctly.
Yeah, because there's 190,000 there.
I'm meeting with the Sewer Commissioners tomorrow evening.
I know from my updates on the meeting with the library that they had, that they definitely have been moving forward on that project. They ran into some delays related to some HVAC work and identifying an HVAC vendor. You know, they reached out to me on that one and I did speak to the project architect maybe a week or two ago. And that is moving forward now. So they did have a little bit of delay, but they can, I'm sure they'll give you the full rundown when they, when they meet with you. But I just offer that for the benefit of the board.
Okay. And Mr. Vice Chair, is there anything with the Municipal Building Committee?
Yeah.
225,000.
I can answer that. So I know that Carter is not as familiar. So, you know, after our last meeting, the copy of the RFP was requested. I think I sent it over the next day. And, you know, we're, just to kind of, I don't want to take too much time, but the history here is that we've previously gone through this process and hiring an architect, conducting all the space needs, all the things that happen, usually the schematic design phase. And our target was the TC Passils building at that time. So that architect, you know, met with all the staff. We came, met with community organizations. We worked for years. And what we identified toward the end of that project was the price tag of roughly $30 million. And it didn't address the Ritter building and it didn't address Town Hall. So we repurposed that group to kind of take a better look at the more historic buildings, Town Hall and Ritter, come up with kind of a better vision, better plan. And so this last step is taking, as, and I can forward you the RFP as well, is taking all the existing data that we already have and helping us reprogram it into this building and the one across the street and a new, new build. And I think we already have a pretty good vision already for what we want to see. But it's just that final kind of component of kind of drafting up what this is going to look like and then cost estimation. That's really the major component.
So is it a design contract then?
It is, but it's, it's, it's in the, it's part schematic and then part design development.
So has that RFP been, been reviewed? I'm just wondering the timing, getting.
Yep, so.
Do we have enough time and enough runway to get that under contract by the end of the year?
We do. So, I mean typically, so where we're at on this one is I did reach out to the Assistant Town Manager about a week and a half ago and asked for us to schedule a time to kind of review it. And then I also mentioned that, you know, I'm trying to target getting a meeting together. I don't have the date yet for the Municipal Building Design. You know, by the end of the month, maybe the first week of September. And so the expectation is that it's going to be out to bid for about four weeks. That's pretty standard. And then that allows us then to bring it under contract in around October, beginning of October. That's the target and that's the goal. And then the expectation is that we'll work roughly mid-October, November, December, January. So that way, you know, it's a couple of month process and we can wrap it up in time for everything to be in the budget going into the spring. But I think that, you know, if the Municipal Building Design Committee does not expend these funds and there's clearly no pathway to do so, then I do, you know, I would agree in reprogramming it. But, you know, again, you know, this is, the funds are here to assist in bringing the information at town meeting.
So my question is, when is that deadline?
I think.
When, when, when is the, you know, fisher, you know, cut bait?
We did talk about that last week and we all, from what I remember, sort of agreed that in the beginning of October, we want everything to be settled, but.
Doesn't sound like this could be under contract by October is what I'm hearing.
Or in October at least.
Well, see, we keep pushing now. See, it's, it was September, now it'll be beginning of October, into October. Before you know it, we're in November.
Personally, I'd be for the first meeting.
I think we need, we need a.
September or the first meeting in October would be the latest. That I, we feel comfortable that we had enough runway to give the money to somebody, any, not this money, but any money to somebody else to do.
To have enough, yeah, have enough time to do something with it.
I think, I think, you know, probably not today, but I think that we need to, you know, as we look at the list as the next step in the process. And, you know, I think we mentioned last week, it's, it will be helpful to identify what those things are that we can quickly bring under agreement by the end of the year and within a month or two, a realistic timeline.
All right, is there any more discussion on that for now?
No, I'll keep bringing it up every week because I've been bringing it up for two months.
Yep, no, I understand. All right, so can we vote now to redirect the consultant for ARPA reporting to ARPA administration and IT slash staffing challenges? And then initial support for fiscal year '23 tax assessment issue to fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25 valuation services? And that's it, right? It's the only two things that we need to actually vote on tonight?
Yeah, the others just roll into your.
Yep.
Reprogramming.
Already accounted for. All right, is there a motion?
I would move that as spoken.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for your support on that.
Of course. So I just did the math real quickly. That total is $6,829.38. So we're going to have to subtract that from the total that we're working with as we move into the next spreadsheet. All right.
Wait, what?
Yeah, I'm confused.
Sorry.
The total is 339,702, correct? When we added the interest.
Actually, never mind, never mind, ignore.
Right, that's, that's our.
That accounted for the reprogramming.
Right.
Of those two. We'll get you a fresh spreadsheet in the next day or two.
Yes.
But that included the reprogramming in the yellow on the right. And it accounted for the two items you've just reprogrammed.
Okay.
So what we have to work with today is 339,702.
$2.56.
And depending upon what you do with your allocations, possibly an additional $14,000 I can describe to you as you go through the requests.
Well, now you've got me curious. You keep finding more money.
I didn't know about that.
I wish, I wish we could stop.
You didn't tell me earlier.
So if we can go to the copy of prioritized.
The final one?
The copy of the copy.
Yeah.
Copy of copy of prioritized?
The online for, B4 payroll services and implementation assistance.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure I'm on the right document, first of all. What document are we on?
What's the name?
I saw it in copy of copy of prioritized.
Copy of copy.
Yeah.
So the 106,000 for the payroll services, what you're talking about?
Yes. If that is deployed on January 1, that number drops to $92,000.
And where does that 14,000 come from?
The reason is you pay $12,000 for deployment and training. And then you only pay one half a year of services for the balance of the fiscal year, which is about $16,000. So there's $28,000. Your next two years are $32,000 apiece. 64,000, 64 plus the 28 is $92,000. Now for the wrinkle. I asked the Finance Director, what is your plan in year three? You know, I've seen towns hire five cops on a. You know, I've seen towns hire five cops on a grant, and then he goes, oh, great, so what are you going to do in year three? So the finance director's plan was that in fiscal '26, he would ask for ten thousand dollars towards this, turn it back to free cash. In fiscal '27, he'd ask for twenty thousand dollars, turn it back to free cash. And in the third year, he'd ask for the full boat, and that's how he was going to implement it. I'm not sure that asking the finance committee to support taxing individuals just to turn it back to free cash is going to be met favorably. So if you assume that you are going to expend ten thousand in the second year, now it's twenty-two thousand in the second year. And if you expend twenty thousand the following year, it's twelve. So that ninety-two thousand, I know, I'm sorry, that ninety-two thousand drops further. But in my view, you have to have a plan to absorb this over the three years. You gotta, you gotta be able to land so that the budget doesn't have a shock of all of a sudden. I mean, it's small, but every small shock adds up.
Well, I mean, it's not a shock if somebody says this year, be prepared in two years that I'm going to ask for it, and the next year says, be prepared, the next year I'm going to ask for it. It shouldn't be a shock then. It's a shock when you don't get any word about it, and then one year, somebody says, oh, we need this money.
But people do have short memories when that final bill comes due. Am I making sense as to what?
Yeah. I just need some clarity. So what you're describing is a position, and this is a new position?
This is software for the payroll.
Okay, so, all right, so I understood the payroll services as a software, but, so okay, so now I understand. So what you're saying for the implementation in our spreadsheet, it's a little overwritten, but assistant, what's that word?
Implementation assistance.
Okay, so it's just implementation assistance from the vendor that's providing this, this is an additional staff?
Yep, they'll deploy it without training you if you want.
Yep, yep, yep. Yep, implementation is, okay.
So what, after we have it for three years, there should be no implementation assistance? Then it's just what? Then it's just the subscription prices?
It's your annual subscription, which depends upon your number of employees and roughly in today's figures, that would be thirty-two thousand a year.
Okay. So from my perspective, I don't see that that's going to raise any eyebrows at all. And that's what the software is, that's what the software is.
That thirty-two thousand could go up three years from now. That's the, that's the, it's not a, this three years, are we locked into that?
My understanding is that they'll give you, that we would have to.
Yeah.
To get under the rule that we're trying to comply with. Yeah, they'll give you a three-year contract, is my understanding. Now, do understand that that's per employee, per W-2, per transaction. So if your employee count were to go up dramatically, and I don't think anybody anticipates that happening, that will ebb and flow a little bit, depending upon how many folks you have on the payroll.
All right.
So by delaying the implementation to January one, we save a quarter, we save, that's where the fourteen thousand comes from?
And January one's good because W-2, all your tax reporting are done at that time of year.
So does the finance director agree that's a good time to switch over? And everyone involved in this, in the payroll process?
This is his suggestion.
Okay.
I did receive a comment from an employee, and I have suggested to the finance director, and I think he agrees, that within the next week or two, we get a meeting scheduled for MUNIS users, different users, and discuss with them where he wants to head, what he thinks that is, see what any concerns there might be. And that would give us, if that just is met with absolute violent opposition, would still give us some time to work around it. But I think he agrees that meeting with the users group would be a wise thing to do.
So is there any downside of waiting till January one?
I don't see any.
Okay.
We stay with the manual process. It's not very efficient for another quarter and a half.
And on to that, Mr. Lonzo's question. You know, when I've experienced these kind of payroll changeovers, usually, in my experience, there's been some kind of overlap. So that way, the payroll administrators have the practice of running kind of a dummy through the system, and then also making sure that the payroll, and I don't know what the cycles are, but that first payroll that's due in January, that you already had about a month lead into kind of doing the test systems, then making sure that everything, everyone's aware, has been trained up in December, where I would assume decent amount of people would take vacations. So, you know, and so my comment then is, I could see a benefit in doing this in December. Do you think the savings would also be there in December?
There might be a little bit of overlap, but we have some, you know, we've still got a lot of numbers floating around.
Yeah.
If this is something the board is amenable to, and after the users group has the discussion, we will have to issue an RFP, and that will give us a sense of whether or not we may need to make any adjustments. But you've also given us that running room up in the very first item that you relabeled, that if we're off a thousand or two or three thousand, we can cover it.
Yeah. I'm always a fan of resolving today's problems today, because tomorrow will come with its own. So, you know, sooner the better, but whatever your recommendation is, I will support.
So I think you could, if you're amenable, if you like that project, I think you could safely reduce that number to ninety-two thousand, which would give you another fourteen thousand and change to that bottom, whatever it was, three thirty-nine.
Yep.
Which is around three fifty-three and change.
It would be about fourteen thousand and six hundred dollars or so.
Yeah, sounds right.
Yeah. All right. So do we want to go through that list real quick? So it's in final compiled ARPA requests, and the tab they want to go to is average.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
We, the proposal was made last week, and I said I wanted to just, I asked about how the median was calculated, was it the true arithmetical median or not? And after reviewing how it was done, it is the actual arithmetic median, it wasn't doing anything like that. I am in support of the median as it takes into consideration outliers from the general bunch, so of the five of our votes, it takes into where does the middle point, that there'd be equal number of either side, so it finds out the real center. Instead of average, which if, you know, one outlier actually adversely, you know, changes the whole average number, if there's one single outlier. So I'm for, and I see there is a median tab, I am for the median.
So I guess I just see it differently than you do. I don't see one member having a completely different ranking than the majority as an outlier. I think average gives us all a fair, you know, equal twenty percent vote. So that's just sort of my opinion.
I think a statistician would not agree with that.
I mean, we're members of a five-body board, right? Our say should account for twenty percent of the final outcome.
Well, I, well, it's not, it should be that, what the grouping should be, what's in the middle of the grouping, there's, there's that argument. So again, if somebody, if there's a group of three or four that put something here, and one person puts something over here, that puts the average way away from what the majority of the board voted. And that's, to me, that is problematic. I think that's what median is designed to account for.
I hear you, I understand you, I think I just have a different perspective on it. So, I mean, we can review the practical differences between average and median and what's funded and one and not the other. From my understanding, if we go.
Well, just to interrupt you, I didn't look at the two rankings and, because I have projects that I want to see funded or not funded, I'm just.
No, I understand, I'm not saying that.
Pure principle, right, okay.
I understand that. So I also didn't update the median tab to account for the extra twenty-seven thousand or so, because I found out when I got here. But based on what I was looking at in median, the DPW Garage Floor Repairs, those two capital projects, the DPW Garage Floor Repairs and the DPW Partial Roof Replacement were included in the median, but not the average. And those are also big-ticket items. So it would push down a lot of the other smaller purchases that, you know, I also thought that we were sort of favoring as well, because they're easier to get under contract. Those would be pushed out. So that's also one of the benefits that I saw with using average, is that we can sort of prioritize that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to those smaller, easier to get under contract projects.
Okay, but you're, but in that estimation, you're doing exactly what I said I wasn't doing. So you're looking at the results and justifying the tab you want by the results you want. And all I'm saying is that, I mean, that shouldn't, you shouldn't be like, okay, this, these are the things I want funded, so that tab is more appropriate to me. It's either, either the average is better or the median is better, aside from the rankings. I mean, I have that, it's the five-member board, so whatever the five members, you know, the majority of the five members want to do is ultimately the decision.
My opinion is average. I think that whatever we do, the public needs to be able to replicate in many cases. I don't, I'm not confident that the average person, or rather, the median person can figure out how to calculate a median. You know, I think that those of us who, you know, studied in math, you know, but outside of people who have that specific experience doing, you know, mostly college-level math, and again, I don't know what they're teaching in the schools today, I don't have kids, I don't know if they're teaching medians and averages, but I think the, I think most people are familiar with average. And so, you know, for now, I'm okay with average, but I'm also okay with, you know, if we walk through this list and we decide that we think something needs to get funded and swap things out, you know, then we do it. But I support the average.
And I support the median.
Selectman Moore, you're the only one who hasn't voiced an opinion here.
I think on this one, I go median, just with, with knowing how, you know, the statistical classes I've taken in my own history, I would agree that median, I think, would be appropriate here.
Okay. So we will go with the median, but we will have to rework the spreadsheet a little bit or at least do some math while we allocate this to account for the extra money that we have. So.
So you can add a running total to a column? I don't know if you can.
I did have that. So I stopped it to where it would be fully funded, just so we could see which actual requests were included. If you see, that's under the amount allocated. So if you go all the way down for the tab, it's three hundred and twelve thousand. So we'll just have to add more in to get up to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Actually, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, if we do the.
If we, if we, yes, we have to change the one hundred and six thousand to ninety-two thousand as well. But yep, you're right.
I'm not seeing that column of your, your running tally like we had last.
It's amount allocated? It's not a, if, you just have to scroll all the way down to the bottom to see the amount.
Ah, okay.
The total? Yeah. All right. So.
And then there's the court one, sir.
Oh, yes, that's right. So I also added that in as well, because we discussed it. And Carter's recommendation, based on conversations that they've had, is to fund, contribute in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred. So, let's see, where is it? I didn't add it on this one, but what I'm going to do is, I'm going to see if I can open this in Safari. It's kind of annoying that I can't actually work on this while we're here.
If I have this done right, it looks like that falls well above the three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-three thousand we have to allocate.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Looking at the list, where is Village of Flat Hill?
It's like five, six below where it ends.
I have a, I added, I downloaded it to Excel, because I can't deal with Google Sheets, and have a column of the running total.
Yeah.
And sorting by median, that falls, that running total, it's at four hundred and twenty-one thousand to include, so it is ranked twentieth on the list, twenty-first.
Are you accounting for the fact that Carter's recommendation is to pay twelve thousand five hundred dollars?
That is in there. I haven't adjusted, I have to adjust down the payroll service. Right, subtract fourteen thousand, so if I take that to ninety-two.
That should be ninety-two thousand.
And some odd hundred. Let's see, did that update? And Village of Flat Hill. And that running total is still over, it's at four hundred and twenty thousand. Just adding those twenty-one items, fully, everything's fully funded, right, except for.
I don't really.
If I dial into Zoom, can I share my screen?
I don't really understand what you're saying. So you're saying that you added, you accounted for the fact that the payroll services, ninety-two thousand.
Yes.
Instead of one hundred and six thousand.
Yes.
And you only added the twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the Village of Flat Hills to the total that's amount allocated? And you're where?
And I sorted by median ranking, median prioritization, and Village of Flat Hill falls at number twenty-one. And if you add all twenty-one amounts, the total comes to four hundred and twenty.
So you're adding all the ones that go down to Village.
I am, because it falls twenty-one. So something, if it's going to move up.
You brought up at the last meeting that we should also include the request for Village of Flat Hills, because we have that agreement.
So something will have to come off the list.
The way that you're thinking about it, yes, because you're going to go all the way down to that point? That's not what I'm saying we do. I'm saying that we start from the top of the list, working our way down to the point where we've completely allocated three hundred and thirty-nine thousand and seven hundred plus, you know, the fourteen thousand, but also include the Village of Flat Hills request, because we decided that we were going to include that.
Yeah, so we'll be, my point is it's going to leapfrog things that were ranked higher based on our prioritization.
Village of Flat Hills request is.
Yes.
But that's also, that was your recommendation.
I know, I'm just being totally transparent out there, that we will, to, to meet our agreement, what we discussed last year, that is what is required.
Yes, that's correct.
And I want to clarify, I support the request of the Village of Flat Hill as a note. You know, I think it's in our best interest to get that product to help move forward. But I don't recall us making a commitment as much as it was a willingness to be supportive. I recall two different meetings with the trustees and then walking out of them. And then, you know, the third meeting seemed to be when we were able to, you know, come into agreement. So I'm not trying to back off of the request, but I, I perceive it more as a request than as a commitment. But regardless, in my rankings, it would have been funded.
Yeah, I, my ranking here doesn't look like I remember, but I, I support it, I just want, I think my comment had, to be clear, that it, this is a one-time thing, it's going to be maintained, they take responsibility to maintain it going forward.
We talked about that.
Yeah. Which, right, we talked about last year.
So Renee, is your ranking in here incorrect then?
I, no, I think it.
You gave it a fifty-eight?
Yeah, no, that doesn't sound right.
That doesn't sound right.
But I've adjusted it so many times. Let me see if I can find.
So I can actually work on it?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a copy and paste error from a previous version. That's on me.
So what, what you submitted, though, was a fifty-eight?
Yeah, but that, that wasn't, that's, yeah, that was a.
Well, my guess is, errors happen. That if you, I don't know what, you will rank it, but.
You know what? With the median, it really doesn't matter. That, that doesn't impact, right?
Well, it depends. Yeah, no.
Well, I mean, we're doing math.
Depends on what you rank it, I guess.
All right.
It can rank it. It matters how wrong the fifty-eight is.
Yeah, it's pretty wrong.
Well, there you go.
All right. So I'm just reworking this real quickly. This is turning into a little bit of workshop, which is good, in my opinion. So don't mind me while I'm just sort of working away for a little bit.
Yep. Would it be helpful, Mr. Chair, while you are working that spreadsheet, for me to assist with warrants and minutes?
Sure, why not?
All right. We have minutes from our last meeting, excuse me, from the meeting on the sixth. Several members had revisions. Are we all comfortable with the minutes as presented?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
And is there a motion?
A move that we approve the minutes of, I'll tell you what, what I'm approving when I get there.
August sixth.
Of August sixth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. All right, minutes are approved.
May I comment?
Of course.
It was suggested to me last week, as I was talking about, it's Tuesday night, and then we do an agenda, that I try to think in terms of a two-week cycle, and I, I think that's probably a good idea. So our plan, I think Annie has sent you, is tomorrow to send you out two sets of minutes for review and comment, then we'll have them on that following, you know, ask for comments within a week, then we'll have them on the following agenda. And that's the goal that we've set for her, to get two minutes available for approval at each of your meetings, a most recent meeting, and then a furthest back meeting, so we can try to close that gap over time.
Sounds good.
All right, still working. All right, we'll go to warrants. And Selectman Emke, if I can start with you, so they can come down the other way this time to give the chair more time.
So where is this one?
Accounts payable.
Oh, accounts, yeah, okay. Accounts payable in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
That's.
All of these?
The whole stack, yes.
Well.
I didn't need to bring the whole thing down.
Yeah, you don't need the whole thing.
Thanks.
We have many things to sign.
All right.
Thank you. Does it matter which one of these lines I sign?
Nope.
So I have it updated. I'll add it to the drive. So one thing I will say about how I just did this, like, algorithmically, if I got it to the point where the next available request was too large to fund, I would skip down to find a smaller dollar amount one that I could fit.
Sure.
So in that sense, you will see some that appear leapfrogged, but that's why.
That's fine.
So I got within, I think, about a thousand dollars. I had to sign that, too.
Okay. We don't have to read the license signatures, do we?
Sorry, what?
The license.
No, we just have to sign them.
We just have to sign it. It got approved.
So hold on one second, and I will get that to you guys shortly through the drive.
Thank you for doing that, Caesar.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I knew this was going to be a workshop, so.
Uh, so that's just for Caesar.
Okay, so I just uploaded it. It's called uploaded median, or updated median. It should be in the drive now. So I'll let you guys look over that.
Just two. Hold on. Your pen, I grabbed blue.
My pen? Yeah, here. So the three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-two dollars plus what was the amount for, from the adjustment for the payroll services, that was fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. That total came out to three-hundred-and-four-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. And it looks like I got to three-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. So it's within a thousand dollars that this list got to. All right, so I'm going to sign these things, and then, if you want, I can, like, read through it as well, for the public, too.
All right.
Can I have my pen back?
You can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to put little chains on.
So in this, are we working out of the median tab?
Yes, we are working out of the median tab.
Thank you.
So one question, the consultant services for Munis from the sewer commission.
Yeah, actually, I was going to bring that up. Is that needed? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, my understanding was that was covered.
Did I add that back in?
The finance, it looks.
Okay.
Can we confirm that?
It looks like it.
Because I've heard two different versions of that, whether it was included in his request or not. So we might need to go back to the finance director to confirm.
Yeah, so I'm pretty sure as well, the finance director's request would be for everyone, all departments, but we can, before we allocate it, yeah. What were you saying?
No, Mr. Alonso was trying to find it on the spreadsheet.
Oh, I see.
Um, in the email we got from Ezekiel requesting it, it states sewer billing as well.
Right, so we don't need to use that one. Okay, so then, yeah, ignore that one.
So another sixty-four-hundred.
Sixty-four-hundred?
Sixty-four thirteen.
Sixty-four thirteen.
That should be easy enough to do this time. Okay. So then that'll add.
Can we just still, I'm fine with moving forward, but can we still just confirm that that wasn't an additional request?
Yeah. So you're saying you don't want to allocate?
I'm happy to move to.
Just without that one and leave that money aside?
I would leave it allocated as it is, and with the asterisk that we should ask, and so our next meeting in two weeks, if it's, if it's not needed, then we just go to something else that fits.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay.
I, I didn't want to speak for.
That's exactly what I was.
But I just.
No, no.
That's what she was asking.
Thank you.
All right. So where are we at now? Do we feel good about this list?
Yep.
Do we want to?
Yeah, we can go over it. I'm not quite sure how to read it yet.
I know. Wait, wait, what do you mean?
Is it ordered? Is it just in numeric? Did you sort it already?
Yeah, it's all.
All right, so where, so where do we stop?
Um, so if you look in this column.
Yep.
Amount allocated.
Yep.
Those are the ones that are actually being funded.
Got it. Okay, perfect.
That's all.
Yep.
All right, so I'll read it for the public now. So using the median, we are funding a Munis consultant in the amount of sixteen-thousand, payroll services and implementation assistance is for the new service, ninety-two-thousand dollars, two intravenous fusion pumps for fire EMS in the amount of seventy-five-hundred dollars, new furniture for the public safety building day room in the amount of twenty-thousand dollars requested by the firefighters association, one year for the weekend food kit program.
Can we pause there for a second?
Sure.
So can we, can you just walk me through how we got there? Because I think only one member noted half of the amount, and all the other members did not note that at all. And so I, I ranked it at, for the full amount.
Oh, I see.
How do we get to fifty percent of it?
Um, well, I just, I guess I just put it down. But we can have the discussion if we want to fund the full amount. I also, I don't know, I guess I just didn't put it down myself, which is why I added it there. Obviously, I supported it, but.
Yeah.
We can have a discussion on it. Do we want to full fund two years?
I, I've noted before that, um, you know, the majority of the money from ARPA was intended to be spent on the community.
Yeah.
And I'm familiar with the Bright-Eyed Program, where they, you know, where they work with kids and families who are food insecure. They provide weakened food kits, they provide summer kits for families to help out. And to me, you know, of the, all the money that we're allocating, you know, this is definitely one that, that to me is, meets the spirit and the letter of the law that provided the fund. So I, I support the full amount.
I'm fine with that. What other members want to do?
I don't get to the same reasoning, but I get to the same amount.
You want to fund the full amount?
Yeah, I think it's clear, only one member said half.
Right.
And every four of us said the whole thing, so.
Yeah.
I think it should be the whole thing.
I think that's fair. All right.
Okay.
But not because it's the spirit of the law, it's because that's our ranking, and we can spend it however we want. And that's how it ranks.
Yeah, fair enough. So then that'll, okay, it should be pretty clear how that's going to be adjusted. So it'll be an additional nine-thousand, actually.
So it'll change what we can allocate?
It will.
Yeah.
So I'm looking, it'll be council on aging, plus tree removal, that's seven-five plus one-thousand, so it's eighty-five-thousand. And then, well, I guess it depends on how we want to remove this.
Right.
I'm not, I, I'm not watching, because I can't see the numbers live, so. We're nine-thousand over.
So I think what would happen in this sense, in this case, is that we would remove the, let me just go back to my laptop.
So two things I would say, Mr. Chair. I mean, I would say that, first of all, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but I'll just put it out there, because I think Member Emke said that her fifty-eight is not correct. So I don't know what would be correct. But anyway.
What is that for?
For the, for the.
Flat Hill.
The Village of Flat Hill. It's, it's got a low rating, because, where it's got a lower than possible. I don't know what she would rerank it. It may change the median, it may not, depending on what she ranked it. But without the ranking change, we can certainly remove a tree removal, because I do think we did, we may not have taken a vote for the Village of Flat Hill, but we made it clear that we would support them. So we, we, nearly the full weight of a vote, that we said we would share that to the twelve-thousand-five-hundred. And it is something that is potentially affecting that basin, not working to specification, is potentially affecting lots of people down that road with lots of water. We should address it. And so I'd be for, again, leapfrogging and taking the tree removal out and putting.
Which one? Because we had a couple of different.
The seventy-five-hundred one, the one that's, like, the one right above the.
Yeah, the Historical Society.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to have to do it, anyway.
To get to that nine, extra nine-thousand for Bright-Eyed, we have to.
Right. And then we can revisit it if, depending on what the Director of Finance, the finance director says about that Munis consultant money.
Right.
Okay. So I have five-four. I have about three-thousand dollars that I can add back. So I'm just going to do that real quick.
Well, we can hold off on three-thousand for the next meeting. I mean, that's.
Okay.
To reallocate. Let's see what we have with the other one.
Sure. So, okay. I left off at Bright-Eyed in the amount of eighteen-thousand, and then Lunenburg Historical Society, computer upgrades, photocopier upgrade, paint and repair exterior trim, DPW garage floor repairs, DPW partial roof replacement.
Mr. Chair, if I may, would you mind just announcing the amounts as well? I think the last thing was the Historical Society.
Computer upgrades in the amount of one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars. Photocopier upgrade.
No, not, not one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars.
I'm just going to hit the reset button. We're really deep in the weeds here. So yes, computer upgrades in the amount of one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, photocopier upgrade, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars, paint and repair exterior trim, five-thousand-two-hundred, DPW garage floor repairs, sixty thousand, DPW partial roof replacement, sixty-five-thousand.
If I may interrupt you there, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
I even know you're on a roll.
That's fine.
Those two, as noted previously in this meeting, are very high-ticket items, but they also are much-needed repairs. But I would throw you to the interim town manager, this has to be fast-tracked with the DPW. We need to get somebody to see if they can get a quote and get people on this.
These aren't quotes, these are bids.
Bids, okay, sorry. Yep. So if you can get bids for this in time, so that we can, that means getting an IFB out, two of them, prickly.
Fortunately, they're relatively low amounts, so they are simpler to bid out.
Yep.
We will need to prepare specifications, and hopefully, we can find an architect who can do that for us quickly.
Yep. And I just want an honest assessment. If they come back, it's no knock on anybody if we can't get this done quickly, because we'll just go on to other things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, no problem. Conservation Commission, local match for Mass Trails Recreational Trails Program grant in the amount of fifteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and five cents. Council on Aging, sail shades for backyard patio for bocce and shuffleboard courts in other areas, two thousand. DPW tree removal, twenty-five thousand.
Wait, is that one in there?
Yes. So that's, um, it is in there. That's the other tree removal. So then Council on Aging, triple-sided outdoor message board kiosk in the amount of three-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Historical Society, rolled map storage units, five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And then we're going to jump down to the Sewer Commission, consultant services for Munis, six-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, and we're going to ask if we still need that.
Then he skipped over it.
And then Council on Aging, two Adirondack rocking chairs, one-thousand-seventeen dollars and seventy cents. And then finally, Village of Flat Hill trustees, detention basin cleanout and replacement of outlet in the amount of twelve-thousand dollars and five-hundred, twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And then that brings us to a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and sixty cents.
You do have two listed below, eleven-hundred and two-thousand. Are those errantly put in there?
Yeah.
Painting in the meeting room office and long-term strategic plan for.
Oh, okay. So I did an adjustment from adding Bright-Eyed back in as the full cost, which might be why those aren't included now.
All right.
Okay. So those aren't in there, right?
Hold on one second. Yes, they're, they are not.
Okay. So I, I want to offer a comment, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
And it may sound a little bit like the one I've already given. So, you know, I think that in this, you know, I accept the rankings of the board, we're a duly-elected board, we, you know, come into this, we approach it, I accept the rankings. I just want to identify that there are several things on this list that could not be funded by any other means. You know, we know that, how the capital planning process prioritizes certain things, and so to off-the-top, you know, we went out to multiple organizations, we asked them to put their best foot forward and come with some ideas. And what we've done is we've pulled a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from the capital plan, you know, that, that, and I'm not saying it's not needed, but it's really at the expense of these other organizations that may be waiting years, if ever, to be able to get things done. You know, we heard the request from the school committee about the ten-thousand dollars that is needed, you know, that didn't make this list.
Yeah.
We know that there's booth repair. We know that there's booth repairs, we have town meeting in the schools, you know, that was a request in here that didn't make the cut. We know that there's, you know, summer reading programs that didn't make the cut. You know, increasing capabilities for technology in different areas, painting in different rooms, that didn't make the cut. So there's a lot of low-value items here that are, you know, ten thousand, two thousand, five thousand dollars. So, you know, we've already, you know, again, the board came up with a process. We're going through it, but I just want to identify that, you know, I think if we were going to go out and, I think, I think the capital planning prioritization, which, you know, three members of the board highly prioritize, and again, we said we're ranking, but I just want to identify that there's a lot of other good that we could be doing here, and we're not. But, you know, we did our list, and I, again, I'm not speaking ill of the DPW garage floor repairs, but I, my opinion and why that, why those two items got a lower ranking for me was because I think that it's not, I looked at it from the lens of, you know, some of these other things are never gonna see the light of day, and this is an opportunity for them to see the light of day.
Yep, I hear you.
So it sounds like we've allocated. What are we up to, Mr. Chair?
So I also added painting in meeting room office, which is the next lowest dollar amount that fits in for the Lunenburg Historical Society. That brings me to three hundred and fifty-three thousand fifty-three dollars and sixty cents.
And I'm assuming when, after we vote on this, this final spreadsheet will be sent to the Google Drive or somewhere?
Yes.
Okay. And just, and if I may, just for clarity, so we don't mix these up, if we can remove all the intermediate ones from the Google Drive that didn't, you know, that.
Sure.
It's okay to have last week's or whatever, but I don't want to have five copies and I gotta figure out which one is the right one.
Yeah. So I'll add this now too, just so we can all read it before we vote. But looks like this is probably gonna be the finalized one.
Or you could just put in a date on it too, in the title.
All right. So I just added it. It's final updated median ARPA, and I'm gonna delete the other intermediate one. And it only has one tab, which is the median, so. But like I said, this one gets us to three hundred and fifty-three thousand fifty-three dollars and then sixty cents. And that leaves us with about, let me calculate it real quickly. One thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents left over. All right. So do you guys need more time to review it, or?
Nope, I'm all set.
Thanks.
I'm fine with it.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion to allocate this?
Sure. I move to commit the funds as stated by the chair.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right.
Can I ask how we get the, this communication to the people that we just funded? How this gets to them?
Yep. Carter, do you want to answer that?
Once I have a clean sheet, we'll start to reach out, the Historical Society, some of the others we're gonna have to have cooperation agreements with. And we'll try to get the word out this week.
I just wasn't here for the last time it was allocated, so.
We didn't discuss it. We didn't discuss how we'd get out the word, so.
Okay.
Well, it's a good thing we did this time.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, guys. Moving on to draft financial policy manual. Is there an update on this one, Carter?
There is not. We mentioned, we circulated a document to you a couple weeks ago. I have the comments on that. We have one coming out to you on another matter this Thursday. Try to spool these out one at a time.
All right. Any questions? How about the board and committee handbook?
Same, same, same approach.
All right, cool. Moving on to current business, discussion on Flat Hill Road speed limit. So we do have the results of the most recent speed test, but our DPW director is still conducting fieldwork to determine exactly where he thinks advisory speed limits and signage could go. So I do want to wait for the results of his fieldwork and what his recommendations are first, but I did want to add this as an agenda item, so we're tracking it. Is there any addition on this? Is there any discussion on this tonight?
All right. I mean, I, my opinion is that we should lower the speed limit to thirty miles an hour. I think the residents requested twenty-five, but I think thirty is appropriate. I think that the area could be considered thickly settled. You know, I mean, it's, you know, not so thickly scheduled, settled, but I think it's, it's thickly enough. And specifically, the area after the intersection on Flat Hill with Page. So going from Page toward reservoir, where the road becomes more hilly and windy, and that section of the road, I think, speed limit to thirty miles an hour, which reflects what people are mostly already going, I think would be appropriate.
Yeah. So I know that's obviously gonna be the focus of his fieldwork, is that area really around the lake, so I don't know if he'll suggest thirty or maybe twenty-five in that area. I don't know. So we'll see at least what his recommendations are and then.
He being?
Bill Bernard, DPW director.
Well, I think he, didn't he say it in his email?
He said in his email that he still has fieldwork to do.
Right.
Is the engineer from MassDOT that he's referencing in his email coming out, or is that just a discussion?
No, I think that was just someone that he reached out to, to get an opinion for. The recommendation from the MassDOT engineer was not to reduce the speed limit on the entire street to twenty-five miles per hour. So the state guidance for selecting speed limits is that you set it to the eighty-fifth percentile of a speed study that you do. And if you go any lower than that, you're creating what they call an artificially low speed limit. And they have research and data that suggests when you do that, you're pretty much making it less safe because there are still people who are driving at that higher speed, and then there are gonna be people who slow down substantially to that artificially low speed limit, which then creates conflict between those fast and those slow drivers. So that's why the MassDOT engineer didn't recommend lowering it throughout the entire street. So he's gonna do fieldwork to determine where we could put in advisory speed limits, which go around like curves and like hills and areas like that.
Right. But just so people know, advisory speed limits are not enforceable. They're just cautionary, just so people are aware. And so for every, with DOT here and with the police chief, so far, the two professionals who deal with this are against this. And I generally, without having any experience in this field, I'm going to rely on the experts and the data that they find. So so far, with what we've heard, I would be against lowering the speed limit. I'm for the advisory signs. I think those are always helpful.
All right. Is there any additional discussion on this for tonight?
Yeah, I think it's helpful to understand that, you know, if, if our process was that, you know, people with professional experience get to set speed limits, then that would be our process.
Mm-hmm.
But it's not. Because I think that speed is perception, and I think that when people live in a community, they should be able to have a say on what their speed limit is on the, you know, roads that go by them. So, you know, I do respect that there is room here to get professional input, but I think that the role, at the end of the day, is for us to do what is fair for our residents. And if people in our neighborhood want to lower speed limit, I think we should lower it. So, you know. But we all can come to our own conclusions in different means, and I do respect that we all have different processes. But I just want, I'm really responding to Mr. Alonso that I hear him, I respect him, I get it, you know, but I think that our role here is to look beyond that and take that into consideration while also considering the request of the people who vote, who pay their taxes, and who want to, who are, who are every day working to build a better community for us.
Yeah, I hear both of you, and I'm not sure exactly where I'm at yet, which is why I want more information and more time to really think about it. So.
Well, if I understand the process correctly, even if we were to set a speed limit, it still needs to go to Mass DOT and the Registry of Motor Vehicles for approval in the end, right?
I'm not sure on what state approval there is. I'll look into that.
I think this is based on our charter.
Based on what?
Would that be because we passed the twenty-five?
Yeah, we adopted some, some state, some state provision, so must, some MGL provision.
Because without that, we can't change.
Otherwise, we wouldn't even, we wouldn't be considering this.
Yes. I'm not sure. I'll look into it and get a better answer about that. But that's where that is at this point. So. Anything else? All right. Moving on to minutes, warrants, action items. We did most of that. Are there any action items?
I do have one. You know, given what we've heard in the last few weeks and few months regarding employment and people leaving and whether or not we have exit interviews, et cetera, et cetera, I think it would be appropriate, and I would recommend or suggest to this board, that we ask for, from the HR department, a state of the organization report. So they can report to us on a document that says, why are we seeing the things we're seeing? Are they anomalies? Are there other things going on? I mean, if it needs to be a confidential document, it should be a confidential document. But I'd like to know from that department what seems to be, in my eighteen years on this board, an anomaly of, you know, the churn in employees coming, going, going all over. I'd love to know what that is. I make that as a recommendation coming from the HR department because, again, this board is not positioned to do it themselves. And that would be the right avenue from the, from the town manager or interim town manager in this case, through the HR director to come up with that report.
I have a question, and it's sort of procedural that kind of follows up on that. Your email earlier today that we do do, I think it was today, Mr. Interim Town Manager, that we do do exit interviews?
That's my understanding. And we've sent you the form that is, is being used, and if you see something there, particularly as a former.
So I know I did an exit interview when I, when I left. But is there a vehicle, or should there be, or should there not be a process where this board is privy to those? Is that something that goes too much into day-to-day? That's where I was saying, where it's procedural. I'm not, I'm not sure.
I think if it's a personnel issue, probably not available, that form, my guess, would not be available.
We could possibly give you.
Because I think that's the vehicle for the employees that are leaving, that we keep talking about these issues.
Sure.
To put forth their issues. And if it doesn't get to our board, how do, how do we know what the issues are if they're not ever coming to us?
Which is why I'm asking for this, because that would be filtered. We wouldn't see the actual exit reports, but they can basically consolidate them, kind of like what we do, town manager evaluations, town manager. So nobody knows who said what, but you capture it and nobody, and no personnel confidentiality is exposed.
I can tell you, my exit interview was not good. I was very unhappy when I left my time here. And I think that a lot of the times that information was filtered and didn't, wasn't getting to this board.
It wasn't filtered, by the way. It was blocked. Like I didn't hear.
Yeah.
I know from talking to you, but I don't know from any other method.
So, you know, whether that report would fix this problem or not, I'm not sure, but I would like there to be a more open line of communication about whatever issues staff do bring forward. Because that was the vehicle, and I know that I didn't get.
Nowhere.
I want to be crystal clear about something. I want to get to this board, all of the information at once, but we'll consistently be doing so in a manner which tries to respect the division of roles and the charter.
Yep.
And if you think I'm being too protective, we can have a conversation. But I do, I do think we need to understand that the charter's clear on what the divisions are. But certainly we will put together something on that issue.
Yeah. And there was a wall. This request that's being made by Mr. Alonso, I've requested it many times, and it was denied. And I think that what is important, and I, and, you know, my, how I feel, and I'm going my feelings here, how I feel, is that people expect, when they reach out to their elected officials, they expect that their elected officials at least have an awareness. I mean, if our role is to create policies that affect the entire organization, if we don't know what's happening, what's going on, if we don't have a source of information other than one that is, as Selectman, why am I blinking your last name, Moore? I was gonna say, as Selectman Moore just said, you know, filtered, as Mr. Alonso said, blocked, that there just wasn't that insight. And I think that we, I know that exit interviews for at least the last year or so were being conducted. But I think that what's helpful is, you know, when there's a lot of turnover in a position such as conservation, we've had a lot of turnover in that role, that it would be helpful as we go to, when the request is for this board to ratify, for us to be made aware of, hey, these are some of the challenges we've experienced in this role previously, as coming, you know, through exit interviews, this is how we're addressing it going forward. And it's not so much that I necessarily need to see every piece of paper, but I think that it would be helpful for, for at least these comments to be acknowledged. And I'm somewhere in between what's, what's being suggested by my colleagues to my left. Part of me would thinks that an exit interview should be available to the board, and the other part of me says highlights should be available to the board. But this current situation where we get nothing, to me, is just not acceptable.
We'll do our best to find that middle, middle part of the road where neither of us get run over.
I appreciate your willingness to work on it because I can, I know, you know, just from many of my friends that are still here in town, there's still a lot of frustration. So finding what that vehicle is as I'm trying to advocate for staff while understanding where our lane is, is difficult. So I think these conversations are helpful, and I think for people, our staff members that are watching it, they know that we are trying to develop whatever may be the appropriate response, and I appreciate your willingness to work on this.
Absolutely.
My suggestion comes with full sensitivity to the charter and personnel issues. But I also know in a large organization in the private sector, and I don't see any difference here, as an executive body, we should have no problem asking a director for a report on what they cover as a director. So that is what I'm asking. I am not asking to see, nor do I want to see specific exit interviews. They are, they are private between the, you know, HR and the employee. If they wanted to make them, they can certainly make them public if they want it. Okay? But I don't want to ask for those. But I do want to know, as a collective body, what are the highlights of those? Why, what can we do to address the issues that clearly are outstanding here?
All right. Are there any other action items? Committee reports.
Budget Task Force met last night, and we discussed expenditures. And we had a couple of representatives from Bartholomew, Bartholomew in to talk about changes in investment options. And I believe they will be presenting at Finance Committee meeting this Thursday in more detail. And I think our next meeting is September sixteenth.
Town Manager Screening Committee met last night. We finalized the, well, we made some changes to the IFB that I said earlier in the meeting that the chair will be submitting to you and to the HR director for review and eventual birth into the world. And capital planning was going to be meeting on Wednesday, but it somehow did not get posted, so we are not meeting tomorrow, and a new one has not been scheduled yet.
Economic Development, Development Committee meets on Thursday, and the Master Planning Steering Committee isn't meeting yet until October. So I don't have a report today.
And I need to take some better notes and actually make a committee report for the first time in probably two months. first time in probably two months, uh, so I'll make sure I do that in September.
Okay. Uh, planning board met last Monday. I finally watched it, and it turns out I didn't miss anything, because they had to continue all their public hearings, um, for various different reasons, and, um, they did discuss the Chapter sixty-one process, um, and how, you know, we didn't really get information out to open space, uh, and I know that there are conversations with staff going on about that to really, um, lock down a better process for that, uh, so, and that's pretty much it. Upcoming meetings. We will be meeting next on September third, and then September tenth. Public comments. Are there any public comments from the interim town manager?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any public comments from the public? Mr. Passios.
Are we not meeting? Are those our only meetings in September?
Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street. I haven't delved into it, uh, deep enough yet to be, uh, fully knowledgeable about this process, um, but I intend to do that between now and whenever our next Finance Committee meeting is. I just noticed that we're not posted either for this week, so I don't know what happened, but it looks like we're not meeting also. Anyway, I will be looking into the process, uh, Home Rule Procedure Act, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-three B. There are, I believe, three sections, if I've identified them correctly, Section three, Section seven, Section ten, that give the town of Lunenburg the option to seat a charter review committee. They're slightly different processes, and, uh, I intend to bring this up at the Finance Committee when we do meet next. I was hoping it was this Thursday. There is a sizable group of people in this town, including me, and the people I communicate with on a weekly basis, that want the charter reviewed, to put the checks and balances back in that have been removed over the last two revisions. There's way too much power in one person. This is not a city. We don't have a mayor. Sometimes I think we'd be better off with a, with a mayor and a city council than what we have right now. But this process is going to take two years anyway, so if people want to sign a petition, this is the petition probably to sign. Again, it requires, one of the processes is fifteen percent of the registered voters to bring it to a ballot. There are two other processes which I need to study a little bit closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios.
Mr. Chair, one comment?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Passios, I think I saw the agenda posted on the bulletin board downstairs for Thursday.
You did, okay.
Well, double check on your way out.
Okay, sometimes on my phone it doesn't come up on the calendar.
Well, it's not online, but that's, that's okay.
Not on the website. It's not, but it may be posted up front.
As long as it's posted downstairs, we're good.
Double check, but I think I saw it.
I will. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments from the public?
Yeah.
All right. I know, I just wanted to see if anyone else in the room wanted to make a public comment first. Uh, Sue, I see you on Zoom with your hand raised. It looks like you're still muted.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, I'm Sue Dougherty, the Director of the Lunenburg Council on Aging, um, Ten Harbor Terrace. I usually don't go on to make a public comment, but, uh, bear with me, because I just wrote a couple of notes down that I'd like to say. I was watching the earlier public comment session concerning Mrs. Lincoln's comment regarding the interim town manager has done more for the Council on, Council on Aging since his arrival than the former town manager did in the past seven years. Although I do like the interim town manager very much, I don't agree with that statement. As the Director of the COA, um, I have to say that Ms. Lemieux had, has been totally supportive of myself as Director and of the programs, um, at the center over the years that she's been here. Uh, this leaves me feeling like my parents are getting a divorce, in lack of a better term, and they have to choose who to live with. I'm not going to choose. I have great respect for Mr. and Mrs. Lincoln and the former town manager. Uh, I do agree that all of this turmoil and arguing needs to stop. We need to move on and take care of town business and town employees, and just let government do its job and do it the right way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. All right, are there any public comments from the board?
Can I ask a question? Are there other meetings in September?
Are there other select board meetings?
Yeah.
I would have to look at the calendar.
Okay. I was just wondering, because only September third and tenth were listed.
Yep, let me look. Sometimes they don't always have the full meeting schedule for a month.
Okay.
It's typically just the next two.
Okay.
But looking at the calendar, no, there will be one on the seventeenth as well. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It is nine twenty-four PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone at home, for watching, and we will see you in September. Have a good night.
J'achou.
And happy Labor Day.